Oh, I will block it, okay. Uh, I moved my camera. Ugh, okay, where do I put myself? Right here, by right here, easier. I will block my own hand. There we go. Good enough for me. Let's see. Let's do pink today. Where's pink? Pink, pink. This one. There's speed studying this morning. Let's see. Hi, item. This one. And then this one. There we go. Alright, let's see what this week's studying is gonna look like. Thanks for first. I don't know if you heard me say it. I don't know if the ads were playing when you got in. Hello, 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 hello. Hello. Good morning and hello. We're on... Good morning, good morning, good morning, good morning, good morning. I figured since I'm awake and I'm waiting for work to happen, I'm going to... Um, I am going to... Yeah, I'm gonna start. I'm gonna get a head start today. So then, I don't have so much to do after work. Yeah, so that's a good idea. The urinary system. Oh god, we're gonna talk about piss. Talking about piss this time? Today's the 20th? Oh my god, today's the 20th. Boy, does time fly. We're on chapter 12. I keep doing this. We're on... Chapter 12? Golden stream, yes, golden stream. And... Oh gosh, it's the re- it's the male reproductive systems too. We're gonna talk about penors. I don't like how this is angled. Beware, you might see my legs for a few seconds. Okay. Okay. Ah, it's just about the same. Alright. Let's see. I see many homes and businesses have aquariums. People enjoy watching fish swim peacefully around in water. In fact, some studies have shown that watching fish in an aquarium can lower a person's blood pressure. I wanna be bigger on this screen, hold on. Okay. Okay, um... Let's see. While the fish are the main attraction, a great deal of hard work goes into keeping the water in their tank just right. The water must be cleaned and maintained with a balance of chemicals to keep safe and clean environment for fish to live in. Otherwise, the water becomes unsuitable for life. The kidneys, the unsung heroes of the body, perform a similar function for the blood. The cells of the body are in constant contact with the blood. Just like fish are always in contact with the water in aquarium. Cells require just the right balance of pH, minerals, waters, and sugar. And the kidney, the kidneys monitor and regulate these levels. If they do not perform their jobs, the blood would soon become toxic. Okay, so it's bringing this up because the kidneys are important. So we're gonna write down kidneys. Regulate. pH. Oh, I should do my thing where I split the page in half. Regulate pH. Minerals. Water. And the sugar. And the... Blood. The basic working unit of the kidney is called the nephron. There are more than two million nephrons in the single kidney. Blood pa- blood passes through the kidneys into a cluster of small blood vessels known as the glomerul- I don't know how to say that word. I see here the blood is filtered with water nutrients being forced into the surrounding capsule around the glomblebleble. This filtered liquid then flows through a series of small tubes. These tubes flow next to blood vessels as they filtrate past this through the series of tubes. Much of the water nutrients in it are reabsorbed back into the bloodstream. At the same time, the remaining unfiltered waste is forced into the last part of the tubes as these long tubes contain waste dump into a basin known as the renal, renal or renal pelvis. Long vessels from each kidney called uterus drain these collecting areas into the bladder and a large holding bag for urine. When the bladder becomes full, a signal sent to the muscle that is holding the urine in the bladder. When this muscle relaxes, the urine empties out of the body through the urethra. Great. Awesome. I love learning about P. Been a month since an AM stream. Yeah, it takes me a little bit for me to get up. Usually I start at 8 o'clock, but today we're... I was just like, you know what, if I wanna get back into the groove of things, we gotta, we gotta start now. It's Sunday morning. Oh. I'm watching the Holo Live peeps, the Holo peeps play Among Us on Twitch, cuz I want the Yagao emote. And I never wanna leave. Oh yeah. Then maybe all I need in darkness is all I see. Oh, I wanna listen to that one. I'll burn so light if I shine it from here. Oh, it's still kinda bright. I wish I could adjust its brightness. You gonna do a Christmas special stream? Um, maybe. It's kind of hard to do holiday stuff like that because my parents are also home on holidays. Like for Christmas, my parents will be home as well and it's like, uh, I obviously do spend time with my family. It's just kinda hard to stream on those days. Usually I'll do it like the day before or after. I was gonna say doesn't have to be on Christmas. Yeah, we could do it the week before, a few days before. I always wanted to do it the day of. You have two kidneys? I see. At a rate of 200 quarts per day, if you lose or donate a kidney, your, your remaining kidney can just adjust and perform the work of two by increasing the amount it filters and by increasing its size. If you're born with only one kidney, your kidney may grow to be the size of two normal kidneys. Wow, you can have a big ass kidney. Usually for Christmas, I'll end up, I'll end up drawing everyone Christmas themed. I haven't done it in a long time. I think I did a little bit of it last year. Cuz the first year I did it, I did everyone in just black and white. Last year, if I remember correctly, last year I did it by... How did I do it last year? I think I, I think... Or did I do it last year? No, I didn't do it last year. Wait, I just remembered. Last year I didn't drew it because that was when Cake came to visit, but I think a year before that, I did. I drew everyone with color. But I drew less people. The first year I drew like 20 different people. A lot. You still haven't finished your drawings, right? No. I haven't even finished my 2000 follower drawing. That one's just gonna be, it's just... I just gotta color everyone in. We are young. Oh my gosh, wait, that just reminded me. Yesterday when I was walking to work, I was walking by this car and I like... They were like blasting. Like it wasn't even quiet. They weren't even quiet. They were fucking blasting Christmas music. Like you could hear the fucking car, well, yeah, you could feel the car shaking from the fucking Christmas music. And I was just like, ayo, my kind of people. It's my kind of people. My gosh. This word I just wrote down is urology and it means the study of piss. I'm not even joking. It's the study of urine. I only wish folks would wait till after Thanksgiving. It makes me sad that people overlook it. We still do Thanksgiving. In my house. Hi, Pinky. Me personally, I don't like Thanksgiving as a holiday as for what it means. I like the food, but the meaning of Thanksgiving is a little weird. It's like, hey guys, we just saw... We just took over this area. Food. Why is it telling me what stoned means? I already know what that means. Litho. Yeah, that's the dark side, but the meaning... But the meaning anymore is to be thankful for things and people around you. Yeah, I just don't like the original one. I just don't, so, I don't like fall's colors, so I always get super excited for Christmas things cuz there's a lot of red. A lot, a lot of red. Um, what are Christmas colors? There's like the, like the pale blue and white. Um, I just really like, like the, the Santa outfits a lot. They're really cute and they're really fuzzy. But also Thanksgiving is like a weird... This is me personally, not for other people. Other people, other people are like, why are you so excited for Christmas without Thanksgiving? They're like, at least wait for Thanksgiving. And I'm like... Um, Thanksgiving doesn't have a very strong meaning in my family. We have our, our own holidays that we, we celebrate, like in April and May, we have our New Years. And we have other holidays, but yeah, we don't, our New Years is, is not in January. I wonder how that's gonna be in the future, actually. Am I gonna have like two New Years I celebrate? Cuz this year was like, this was best past year, wait, this year. Yeah, this year was like a fun New Years. Yeah, that's fine. I like spring colors more. I just don't like how warm it gets in the summer. I don't like... I don't like summer colors and I don't like fall colors. I like winter and I like spring colors. Of course, my birthday's in the summer too. I don't like it. I will say though, just because I don't like it doesn't mean that it isn't pretty. I do think they are pretty. It's just not my preferred choice of colors. I can't stand the summer. It's too hot. I think I, I think it's gotten worse now mainly because I get headaches more often in the summer, so I just really don't like the summer. The only thing I would like about the summer is that my birthday is in the summer, but even then I wish my birthday wasn't in the summer. But if my birthday wasn't in the summer, would I really be the same person? Hmm, if I was born like in a different season. I imagine, imagine if I just wasn't like very outgoing. What if, what if like, if, what if I was born in, in the wintertime and I turned out to be like very timid and, and shy and like didn't talk to anyone? That'd be weird. That would be really weird. I imagine if I wasn't very outgoing, I would be super nervous at my interviews. Wait! Wait, did I tell you? Wait, I think you, I think you said, oh yeah, you did, you did, you did. I think, um, the day before yesterday? You're like, congrats on job? Yeah, 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 yeah. Imagine, but imagine if I was just like even less talkative. Like I don't think, imagine if I was just born like, like a few months later? What if, I, I might not, I might not be yoners. Me becoming yoners is because I wanted to talk to people. Cake went to go see one of his, um... His IRL best friend recently. Cake went to go see one of his um his iron best friend recently And he's always given his hold on make sure I can read that And okay I was gonna say he's always uses he's always used a nickname for his best friend even when talking to me And I go how come you never just use his his name when you talk to me like so I I know what his name is because Uh for example like I only know his best friend By its by it by it by his nickname I don't know him by his name I never reckon I know one of his not as close friends as their name but I don't know his best friend's name He was like it just sounds weird and like Not his language cuz his friend has a very traditional name So then I said it I was like okay what's his name and then he's like he's like it's this and I'm like this He's like yeah but it sounds funny when you say it I was like well I don't have an accent it's gonna come out sounded weird But like I don't I don't wanna talk to your friend and be like yo what's up brother I feel bad Oh my gosh wait speaking of cake so yesterday someone someone got into his account and bought a bunch of bits And then he he asked for the refund but now he's banned Now he's now he's banned on Twitch and I was just like um are you gonna Figure out if that's a permabanned or not like Like you I don't think you wanna lose your Twitch account Yeah someone bought like I think it was like almost three hundred dollars in bits on his account and He got it refunded pretty quickly but I don't think Twitch realizes that like he wasn't charging back it was just he got He got got and someone used his money that he didn't authorize you know fraud fraud that's basically fraud right I work at a bank I should know what this means It's basically fraud someone someone without his authorization used his money okay And now he got banned on Twitch for it so I don't like I went to look it up I was like is there like a ticketing system he can use um Like hello It's theft and fraud yes 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 It would be really I would be really upset if he lost that account you know what I mean He has a streak on that account he's gotta keep his streak Oh my god wait this is really I can't believe they put this in the college textbook this is funny so this one's urethra So the length of the urethra depend uh differs depending on sex Uh the average male urethra is about eight inches long and the average female urethra is one point five to two inches long The difference is sometimes mentioned as the reason why kidney stones are more painful for men than women in fact Some say that the pain of kidney stones is the closest men can come to the pain of giving birth Others on the other hand argue that men are just big babies you beat the judge I can't believe they put that far under I see I'd be upset if I lost this account though it'd be easy to recover most of the people I follow yeah I think it's just like you know if you want I mean I mean I'm a streamer so it means even more for me if I were to lose mine But if I was just a viewer I'd be kind of upset like what if I was following someone for such a long time like Like my followage my follow age is like maybe like five plus years I mean on my old my other account that I used to lurk people on Twitch I've been following some people for over ten years I'd be really upset if I lost that Let's see it's a little both last I checked women have higher pain tolerance than both than men who wait really I would say let's say um women have um maybe more higher Physical pain tolerance but men have stronger mental Tolerance emotional tolerance They hold that shit in man I forgot who's Barbie's boyfriend again uh Ken I think his name is Ken I was looking at him off the top of my head I think it's Ken Can you oh my god I have not seen that comment you white guys Can you fit these nuts in your mouth Nuts are small though It's almost time for me to stop I think like what ten more twenty more minutes ten 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 I'm at ten ten minutes because I need to go get ready for work but I also need to go straight in my hair so I can get ready earlier than I normally do I went to bed with a wet head and I woke up this morning and I walked into that one I did walk into that one but anyways I went to bed with a wet head and every single time I go to bed with um wet hair oh I get more than just a cow like my gosh Oh my gosh it's like Like anime bedhead like parts of my hairs and it like floating up it's like curling up Sometimes like curl like actually curling and then like it's like parted weird like one's going this way one's going that way and it's like It's only when I go to bed with a wet head because I move a lot in my sleep pics no I mean it's brushed out now but I think if I move like you can kinda see my hair is like all frizzy right now I brushed it though But it's normally straight I don't like these songs Wait that was the last word wow we finished early I barely see that Is the other pink one stronger? I have two pinks this one Oh that's better I can see that better I'll draw the the thing it gave me then Hold on I'm gonna draw this diagram it made me so we got One kidney and then The other kidney And then we have something down here We'll use this orangey looking highlighter and then make the lines Like that It also has Something going in the from here Is it bleeding? Ah it's not bleeding I love that so much Okay There's like a little part down here okay Human body parts okay so Oh there's a blue one too okay hold on I'll use this side I'm gonna go lose Here as well Okay good enough I got the blues and the reds and the everything colors okay Oh it's smudged I don't know why I put my finger on it it's smudged oh man Kidney Oh no wait no 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 not today please I already dealt with one yesterday I feel a headache Oh no 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 please What do I have to do please I don't I don't want this today I had one yesterday Massage head massage my head Ah massage my head I might have to leave ASAP cuz I can go to the pharmacy to go get some stuff for my head Go away You okay yeah I feel like the tingles I feel the headache tingles No 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 Massage head massage head until it goes away Random Yeah I'm definitely I'm gonna go to the I'm gonna go to the pharmacy before work to make sure I don't have it today cuz yesterday I had it and I couldn't do anything and It sucks having them because I really need to study you know Aside the like pain part of it I drew the parts I drew them Someone stop believing Oh boy next chapter is about literally the penis Okay Let's put my pens away There you go massage it in there okay alright I'm gonna head out I will hopefully see you guys later today I wanna do more studying after work so I will be need one of those when I just do this on you let's squeeze 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 Yes I could do it to your noggin give you good noggin massage like I gave myself two seconds ago it's not doing that good by the way So I definitely need to go to the pharmacy okay I will see you guys later I will have a Very stress-free work day today by going to the pharmacy make sure I have a headache okay If you guys are are at work or going to work have a good day at work if not have a good day and I'll see you later Ah goodbye I goodbye